Good evening, welcome to the January 23 Public Work Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you, emergency exits are either side in the back. Mr. Gavin Superintendent's report.
Thank you, I just wanted to provide the board and the public with an update on strategic planning. The Strategic Planning Committee met yesterday, our focus was on developing drafts of vision statements for the board to consider, along with the drafts of our new mission or proposed new mission statements. While the mission statement tells us what is important to the district, what our values are, and how we seek to get there, our vision statement is more aspirational, future focused, and really, what do we want to be known for? We are prepared for the board, three drafts of a vision statement to consider along with two new potential mission statements, and of course, our current mission statement should we decide to keep that. This will be the main focus of our midwinter retreat with the Board of Education. We will then use the board goals, which we started to do, to establish priority areas for planning. We now have three subcommittees aligned with our current board goals, finance, outcomes and opportunities, and community partnerships. John Murphy will be doing community partnerships, Marie Dalton and Nicole Moriarty will be doing outcomes and opportunities, and then Jackie Rehack will be doing finance and budgetary planning, I'll be at all. So, those will be our subcommittees, and that's how we're going to roll forward with the planning, and we're looking forward to the board's feedback on the mission and the vision. I'd like to kick it over to Ms. Dalton, so that she can give us a little bit of an update on some of the work we've been doing with mental health.
Thank you, good evening, members of the Board of Education, parents, staff, and community members. I'm pleased to provide an update on our Mental Health Committee. We are guided by our goals to address the unique challenges faced by our students, strengthen our connection to the school community, and provide long-term wellness. Our committee has been working to strengthen the support systems available to students and our families. At the start of the school year, we identified several focus areas, including the rising rates of anxiety among young people, and the significant role of social media in contributing to stress, social comparison, and feelings of anxiety and inadequacy. Parents have expressed a strong desire for tools and strategies to help their families foster healthier relationships with technology, and these insights have shaped our priorities this year. In December, we partnered with the Rockville Center Coalition for Youth to deliver an engaging presentation on social media addiction. This event sparked meaningful conversations about technology, social media, and mental health. To ensure broad participation, the presentation was integrated into the health curriculum, and students were encouraged to attend. Positive feedback from this event has encouraged us to explore additional presenters, to further educate and support students and families on the impact of technology. As part of our commitment to preventative care, restorative practices, and promoting positive behavioral outcomes, we've also introduced the Teen Intervene Program into our curriculum. This evidence-based intervention program targets substance use issues, including vaping. Through structured sessions, Teen Intervene helps students build awareness, explore personal motivations for change, and develop actionable plans to reduce risky behaviors. This program has already proven effective in keeping students engaged in school while fostering positive behavioral changes. We're grateful for our partnership with the Youth Coalition, which has helped us implement this vital intervention, and we look forward to expanding these efforts to support even more students. In response to the needs for students, we've launched the District's Twilight Program, which we will be located at the Annex Building on the grounds of Wilson beginning January 27, to support students in grades nine through 12 who are school phobic and credit deficient. This program provides a tailored approach to help students reengage with learning by addressing emotional, social, and behavioral barriers to regular school attendance. Operating during non-traditional school hours, specifically 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., the program creates a less intimidating environment for students who struggle with the conventional school day, offering flexibility and encouraging participation, while building confidence and resilience, equipping students with the tools needed to overcome avoidance, reintegrate into the school community, so we're excited for that. This initiative reflects our district's commitment to inclusivity, student well-being, and academic excellence, ensuring that every student is given an opportunity to thrive. So, we're looking forward to sharing more about our Twilight Program as it develops. Our partnership with Northwell Health remains a cornerstone of our efforts to prioritize student mental health and well-being. I meet regularly with the representatives from Northwell Health to ensure a strong connection between their services, our schools, and the community. In our meetings, we're able to review our data to drive important decisions about the needs of the district. In our meetings, we've discussed how between July and December, Northwell has facilitated many appointments, addressing concerns such as anxiety, depression, school avoidance, and other situational stressors. Anxiety-related issues emerged as the leading reason for referrals, reinforcing the critical need for our continued focus on preventative care and continued access to mental health care. Our data highlights the partnership's positive impact, with 78% of the students referred for long-term care through Northwell appointments, and how their attendance and attending these appointments has helped. This demonstrates the effectiveness of this collaboration in connecting students to care. We've partnered with Northwell to share monthly newsletters via Parent Square, and update mental health resources on the district website, and developed data-informed programming through our partnership. These efforts have helped ensure that our families and staff have the access to timely information and tools to help reinforce this partnership. Looking ahead, we plan to expand the collaboration by hosting additional training sessions for the district staff, organizing community information nights, and commemorating five years of our partnership with an anniversary summer board presentation to review all of our data. This milestone will provide an opportunity to reflect on the progress of the impact of our collaboration and guide plans for future growth and goals. Another exciting initiative is our upcoming Wellness Walk, scheduled for May 3. Early planning with our committee has begun, with a focus on engaging students across grades K-12, encouraging a greater community participation. Finally, we continue to explore ways to enhance community engagement with our sources of strength curriculum by improving access to resources on our district's website and strengthening the homeschool connection. These initiatives align with our belief that collaboration among families and educators and our community partners is essential with fostering student well-being. We've discussed additional curriculum planning and professional development to continue to enhance our student experience and community engagement. I want to thank the Board of Education, our PPS team, and our committee members, along with Northwell Health and the community for their continued support. Together, we are building a stronger foundation for mental health and wellness for our students, and we are committed to this initiative together, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. The other component of my report tonight is we are about to kick off budget season. So, one of the first things that we do typically each year is review how we calculate the tax cap. So, I've asked Ms. Rehack to prepare a presentation this evening, so that she can lead us through how that tax cap calculation happens, and then, of course, if there are any questions, feel free.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for letting me present to you on the budget introduction and our tax cap calculation. Tonight, we're going to go over just the budget schedule, how we develop the budget, and move forward through the next few months as well. We're also going to go over the financial health of the district, which looks at fund balance, the budget history in Rockville Center, and the tax cap calculation. So, just going back over the schedule, you know, we really start budget development back in October. That's when it first starts, right when we finish the financial statements from the prior fiscal year, we dive right into budget season, and that starts over a few months, where we get input from all the building principals, directors, central administration, where they give us, you know, we start with zero-based budgeting, they give us their wish list, we roll forward payroll and contractual increases that we know of, and that's how we start to build it. In January is really when we start to get more of a final picture of the budget, because it's in January when we get the executive budget from the state that comes out with the state aid runs. So, that really gives us the final piece we need at that point to start really having a good picture of what it is, and that's what we're doing this month, and I'll review that with Mr. Gavin, the superintendent. Tonight is our first public budget presentation, just giving the general environment, but we'll have several meetings over the course of the next few months, the next one being February 26, where we'll look at different components of the budget. So, on February 26, we'll look at administration, benefits, and capital. Then, we'll meet again on March 13 and go over curriculum and PPS. Then, again on March 27 to review music and the arts, PE and athletics. And then, on April 10, we'll have our preliminary budget hearing. At that time, that's also when there'll be a resolution on the agenda for the board to look at the budget proposal to put on the ballot and consider it for approval. By May 8, we have our formal budget hearing in accordance with regulation, and then, the annual budget vote is Tuesday, May 20. So, just to look at a little bit of the financial health of the district. So, this is really looking at fund balance, and you'll see fund balance is broken up into three parts. So, you have the first part, that yellow bar is really our applied or appropriated fund balance. Then, the green section of those bars is our undesigned, unappropriate, unassigned fund balance. And then, the blue part of the bar is really our reserved fund balance. Our reserved fund balance is reserves that have been established, and those funds really can only be used for those intended purposes. So, that could be ERS, TRS, and things of that nature, unemployment, the district has a few reserves that go in there. So, just to point out, you can see where we were from '21, '22 to '22, '23, you'll see that we went up. And mostly, we went up in that yellow bar, which is that applied appropriated fund balance. And then, you'll see from '22, '23 that it went back down, and that was really purposeful. The district at that time decided to do the middle school field and the middle school roof, and they decided to use appropriated fund balance for that. So, in planning for that, you see the increase in appropriated fund balance from '22, '23 to plan for those projects, and then, you see it go back down in '23, '24 as those projects were expended. But what you can also look at in '23, '24, which is our last fiscal year that we just ended, the green bar got slightly bigger, and so did the blue bar. So, what that tells us is we were able to put a little bit more funds into our unappropriated, unapplied fund balance, and a little bit more into our reserves. So, we finished the year off in a good place. Our unappropriated fund balance is within the 4% limit, and it's at 3.5% as of June 30, and our reserves have been pretty steady as well. Looking at '24, '25, as you know, I just started here in January. My predecessor, Mr. Bartels, did do a fund balance projection in December, and that's where these numbers come for '24, '25, and he's projecting it to be pretty steady through the end of this year. Fund balance is something, starting in December, we really start doing monthly, so I've already started doing my own fund balance projection for January, and we'll continue doing that each month. So, because it can change from month to month as we move further in the year, and if there are any changes, I'll prize the board of those changes.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I also wanted to go over the budget history, so just a comparison of budget and tax levy and increases over the last 10 years. And one of the things you can see from here is really the budget being the red line and tax levy being the blue line, that they're pretty consistent, when one goes down, the other goes down, when one goes up, the other goes up. When you'll see a change, usually there's some kind of anomaly in there, and you'll see that in '22, '23 to '23, '24, where the budget increased and tax levy stayed pretty steady. And that has to do, again, with the south side, with the middle school field and roof, because it was appropriated fund balance that was used for it, rather than tax levy. So, the budget to budget went up, but the tax levy stayed pretty steady. But now, as those projects come out, you see the budget increase drop back down, because you don't have that major project in there, and tax levy will stay somewhat the same. And now, going into '25, '26, it'll start to level out like it did for the first several years. If we have any anomalies like that, again, you'll see similar swings. So, now, just to go into the tax cap, there's a couple of things I always like to point out with the tax cap. First being, obviously, inflation is a huge driver in how the tax cap calculation is done. As people know, it's limited to 2%, they always hear 2%. So, the growth factor applied in the calculation, which we'll go over the calculation, is limited to the lesser of inflation or 2%. So, if you look back at the past five years, you'll see if you go back to 2021, inflation at 1.31%, and the allowable levy growth factor is also at 1.31%, because it's the lesser of. But then, as inflation starts to jump up in later years, 4.23%, 8.06%, 4.37%, and 2.99%, which is where we are now, you'll see that allowable levy growth factor stays at that 2%. So, that's what we're allowed to apply to the calculation. Now, of course, we're still, you know, affected by inflation, our expenses are still going up, and that's something we have to work with as an administration, and district, and a board on how to handle the increase in cost while still maintaining that 2% growth factor in our cap calculation. So, this was just another slide I had from the State Comptroller's Office, which shows the history since the tax cap calculation came into play. And you'll see in most years, you know, inflation and the tax cap are pretty similar. A couple years, inflation was slightly over 2%, and you'll see that little difference. But you can see in the last few years, when inflation really jumped, that that tax cap growth factor stayed at that 2%. So, now, this is our current tax cap calculation for '25, '26. You start your tax cap calculation with the prior year levy, so we have to start with '24, '25, but we have to make adjustments to that. You start with a tax-based growth factor, which is given to us from the state. It's been pretty level from year to year at 1.006, so it's a slight growth into '25, '26 that you apply to first. And then, you have to add back and subtract your prior year exemptions. So, your prior year pilots have to get added back, and then, you subtract your prior year exemptions. I'll go into them in a little bit. But then, you have your adjusted prior year levy, and you multiply that by the growth factor. So, the growth factor, again, being limited to the lesser of inflation. So, the growth factor, again, being limited to the lesser of inflation or 2%, that is multiplied by the 2%. So, now, we have our base tax cap for '25, '26 at $107 million. So, now, we have to come up with our current year exemptions. So, you have to subtract out your projected pilot payments. So, pilot payments are payments in lieu of taxes. So, you have to subtract them out because they're payments that, from taxpayers that aren't currently on the tax rolls, that are going to make other payments instead of real property taxes. But the state views that as additional revenue, and revenue that should not fall on the taxpayers. So, you have to back that out. Pilots, we have pilots with LIPA. There are also, you'll see pilots with some new construction in the area that they'll apply for. They don't apply to the school district, to the county, so we just get told, these are your taxpayers on pilots, and this is what we project you to receive for a certain period of time. And that's how we come up with those numbers and subtract them out. Then, we have to add back our projected exemptions. This is mostly made up of debt service, principal, and interest, and also transfers to capital, so any capital projects that we included in the budget. So, right now, we have roughly $1.8 million in the budget, which is the same amount as last year. This can change depending on other discussions that we have going forward. But one of the things you'll find with capital projects, we had $1.8 million last year, so if you look above, when we said subtract prior year exemptions, there's 1.8 being subtracted. Now, when you add it, there's 1.8 being added. So, it nets to zero. So, the effect that that line item actually has on your levy is zero. Whereas, if you have a major swing in that, if all of a sudden, we really needed capital projects and we're jumping up to 3, 4 million, then you'd see a big increase in levy, or the opposite, if it dropped down and decreased. So, that's really how that drives in the formula. So, keeping it even from year to year also helps you be closer to that 2% of the cap and just really having that inflation. People always wonder, you know, I'm told we have a 2% cap, why do my taxes go up 2.5% or 2.6%? Because that's only one part of the formula. These exemptions can really drive other parts of it. So, these exemptions, if you have, you know, a lot more capital, or your debt service went up, you had a bond approved, those are things that can drive up the tax cap calculation, and they're an exclusion to it. So, then, after we add back our projected exemptions, we're ending right now at $109,251,846. So, that right now is our tax levy limit. That's the tax cap for '25, '26. It's a 2.61% increase. We're currently planning on a tax levy of $109,240,000, which is 2.6%, which is under the tax cap and prevents needing a supermajority vote. You're not piercing the cap and stays within that calculation. So, just something else I like to point out is looking back at the tax cap over the last five years. So, you'll see over the last five years and what we're projected for '25, '26, you see the tax cap calculation really ranged from 2% to 3%, and the actual levy has also stayed within that 2% to 3% and come in under the tax cap each year. You have that one year, '21, '22, where it was much lower, it's an outlier, and that really was due to federal funding coming in. There was an influx of federal funding, which was used to offset increases in tax levy. So, that's why that's much lower there. And that's really everything on the tax cap and in my slides, but I also did want to mention, we did receive the state aid runs this week. They came out on Tuesday for the executive budget, and our foundation aid on those runs are up 2%, which is approximately $250,000. If you look up the state aid runs, you'll see an overall increase of 4%, but a part of those state aid runs is UPK, and UPK does not go against our general fund budget. And the other 2% increase really is in that UPK, more than 2%. And then, the other item in there that we did see, transportation aid, we saw a decrease in. However, I did make an amendment into our state reporting that we did months ago because we are seeing our transportation expenses actually increase, so I think that number's understated. So, we put in an amendment today, so hopefully, on the February runs, we'll see that number come up. It may or may not make it into the February runs, but we will use our projection for purposes of revenue in the budget because it is higher than what they're projecting. So, but I just wanted to explain those items, too. And that's, that's what I have for the budget. Thank you.
Now, I can thank you very much. Your first formal presentation to us, thank you. Took a lot of information and put it into information in a way that we can understand. I'll turn it over to the board for comments and questions.
Thank you. Thank you for, again, taking that 2% number and helping us make sense of it as a 2% limit in terms of what goes into coming up with that 2.61% tax levy, tax levy limit. We know that we have to do more with less, right? We understand that, and building out those exemptions and taking them out of the calculation that was helpful to see how that, how that works. In terms of the state aid, so there's the expense-driven aid, which transportation would fall under, and then, foundation aid. And there was a lot of talk about potentially changing the foundation aid formula. Can you just give us a summary of how that ended up?
So, the Rockefeller study, as you know, that was completed at the beginning of December, which is a really quick turnaround for the executive budget. So, with that said, there was talks of it not being implemented. It was a 300-page report and it not being implemented for this budget year, and it'll probably, a lot of the recommendations we may see in next year or in the future. But a couple of the things that did come out of that, they did talk about the hold harmless, they did talk about making changes to that. But also, one of the big focuses of that report was really phasing in those changes because state aid is supposed to be predictable for school districts so that they can budget. And so, that was really a big focus of the report, and I hope that the state does take that into account because to just all of a sudden remove something out, we saw what tried, you know, they tried to do last year and what happened to many districts, and they were looking at closing schools and everything else. Because you really need to be able to plan for that. So, I'm hoping that that becomes a big part of this in phasing those in so that districts that would lose aid can plan for it appropriately. We had very little hold harmless, so I don't know that that would have affected us greatly. But they also looked at all these factors. So many of these factors were outdated. They were from old census reports and everything else. So, really getting updated factors and things like that and making adjustments, and that I'm sure they will do and have already started doing. One of the big drivers of foundation aid is enrollment. So, as a district, if you know your enrollment is decreasing, you should know to plan for that decrease in foundation aid because that is a big driver. But now, they're looking at how to incorporate other factors, like students with disabilities and ELL and those things, and how that can be built into the formula. So, none of that's been done yet for this year. They did put on a minimum increase of 2%. So, the hold harmless, which would have made people even, they gave everyone, I think, a minimum of a 2% increase on foundation aid for this year. But we'll see how that develops over the course of the next year, and I'm sure we'll hear more discussion about it as they make changes to the formula.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And in terms of timing, sometimes the frustrating part is waiting for that final budget, right? Which is due April 1st, but is often delayed.
Yes. So, we always hope for it April 1st because, as you know, it's all-time sensitive for when a board needs to approve the budget for purposes of the ballot. That has to happen in April, and some years, we get it in time. We're supposed to have it April 1st, but for the past several years, it hasn't come till later in April. So, if we get it April 1st, we'll be ready to make adjustments if need be. If it comes after, we usually talk about ways, if it comes in more or comes in less, what our plan will be, but the budget will already be approved and adopted and on the ballot. So, it would be not formally in that budget number.
And hopefully, this is a year with no major surprises and no, certainly, to your point, we're in a better position than we were a year ago where, where numbers were wildly fluctuating, and we feel like, from, from all we can tell at this point, it seems to me that we are on a path of as expected.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Just two quick questions. So, enrollment was one of my questions. Were holding fairly steady in enrollment, or?
We're, if you go back probably 10 years, we're probably 150 students down.
Okay.
Some years, that's back up. Some years, it's back down. It kind of depends. Our senior class this year is pretty small, so we're graduating a pretty small class, and we're anticipating a rather large kindergarten class. So, again, that's projection. We don't have everyone. So, we would, we would, right now, think we're going to go up anywhere between 10 and 25 students overall as a district next year.
Okay. And then, my only other question was about the transportation amendment that you mentioned. Can you just, what are the chances that the state is going to look favorably upon what we've submitted to them, or how does that work? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So, what we submitted is really an estimate. The aid will be based on actual, but we don't report the actual until next September. So, when we reported in September, the aid we get in the next fiscal year will be based on the actual we expended this year. But when you enter those numbers, you also put in your projected for the next year, and that's what they use for these runs. So, the projected that was put in was lower than we have now. Now, we're projecting through the end of the year. We know what transportation we have and what our expenditures are going to be, and it's higher than we had entered. So, we went in and made that amendment in hopes to just reflect it on the runs, but our actual aid will be based on actual.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I think you did a great job. Question about the fund balance. So, we're at the 3.5% right now, and I'm wondering what our trajectory is for, do we try to work our way back toward the 4% max? Do we stay where we are? What's kind of our thought about where we're at right now? I know that we did restore it after the expenditures, but just curious.
So, I mean, we'll, we'll discuss that as an administration and a board of what the goal really is. I always think it's good to have that 4% because you never know what could happen. A roof could go something, I mean, not that we expect a roof to go, and we, and we look for all of that. But, you know, things can come up, and when they come up, or like when the pandemic came up, and a lot of districts, there was, you know, talks about losing up to 20% of state aid. If something like that happens, 20% of state aid could be, you know, $4 or $5 million. So, that 4% limit on fund balance, remember, is still only a few million dollars relative to your budget. So, when you look at that, you're like, if I were to lose $5 million in state aid, I'd have a problem. So, you really, it's always best to maximize that for those one-off occurrences that we have seen happen.
All right. Thank you. I'm glad that we're considering it, and I, you had really good information about some of the changes they're looking to factor in, like the special ed and the ELL, because cost per student, that, those figures increase quite a bit when you factor in the actual makeup of your district. And we've had those questions even about what's the right class size and looking at that not as just a strange number, but looking at the actual makeup of our people. So, I love that they're thinking about that. Is there a timeline of when they're looking to incorporate that? It's just talk at this moment.
Yeah, I don't think they have a specific timeline. It's a recommendation, so the governor can look at it and how they, they, they hope that they take it in entirety. That was part of the recommendation, and not cherry pick different parts of it. But reality is, they can do either. They can cherry pick, and they can, so we don't really know what's going to happen with it, but.
That's a positive conversation, so I'm happy at least it's being talked about. I think it's important, and, and every district is different, and Dr. Johnson was fighting that for years about looking at the actual districts and not just doing blanket formulas and looking at what the actual need is. So, I just love hearing that. That's great. You can keep us updated as you hear about that. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions, but thank you for the presentation. It was informative and very well done, and I think very clear. Thanks.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Mr. Gavin, we have a second presentation this evening.
We do. We are not quite done yet. I'd like to have Dr. Moriarty go up to the podium along with her team to give us an update on the math and ELA curriculum review. Remember, we, the first year we were here, we did an ELA full in-depth curriculum review. This is year three for the ELA review on a five-year cycle. This is year two for math. Last year was the in-depth look at math, and this year is social studies. But for tonight, we just wanted to give an update on the board about where we are with the work in terms of professional development, in terms of curriculum review, and in terms of teaching and learning.
Thank you.
Dr. Ram.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you to the Board of Education for inviting us once again to share our work from curriculum instruction and the work that we've been doing across the district with all of our teachers and our administrators that have a direct impact on the experience our students get to have on a daily basis. So, just to remind the community, one of the board goals over the last couple of years has been to engage in a review of curriculum. And right now, I just want to remind everybody through an overview that it is a five-year cycle to ensure that our programs are dynamic, effective, and aligned to student needs. Currently, we're in year two of math, and we are in year three of ELA. So, what is this five-year process, and what does it look like? So, in year one, we dive deeply into current practices, we identify our goals, and we create an action plan with our teachers and with our administrators. In years two through four, which is what we're in right now, we engage in the work that would be our action plan, we assess our progress, and we refine our recommendations with the eye for year five on reflecting, finalizing our recommendations, and preparing for continuous improvement. Now, with the support of the board and with Mr. Gavin, we felt that to nurture this growth for our staff and our administration, it was important for us to redesign the curriculum instruction office and hire two new directors who are with me today, is Ms. Nissler, who is our Director of Humanities, and Mr. Gaye Carty, who is our Director of Mathematics, Science, and Technology. They have been hired and worked tirelessly to support all of the work that has been established in the district, the work that was done prior to them taking on these roles. They continue the conversation with all of our faculty and our administration between all of our formalized professional learning opportunities that you'll have a chance to see in a moment. They also engage in coaching, mentoring, teaching, and leading discussions or dialogue around curriculum instruction with all of our staff members on a daily basis. They literally are in schools every single day, in classrooms, and really a part of the teaching and learning that goes on here at Rockville Center. Why does a curriculum review matter? While curriculum instruction are ongoing and evolving, it's a dynamic process. It should never be stagnant. We have a commitment to adapt, improve, and provide the most meaningful educational experiences for all of our learners. Essentially, we want to ensure that we're aligning what we teach so we can turn the conversation over to how we are teaching it, always keeping an eye on delivering meaningful instructional opportunities for our learners and ensuring equitable outcomes for them as well. So, tonight's focus, we are going to share with you our work in ELA and math, specifically our overview of the curriculum review process and updates that have occurred in both of these areas. We will highlight the progress that has been made, specifically our key achievements and our instructional practices refinement, and most importantly, we'll share the impact on teaching and learning. It is, I want to be clear that our students are our priority and our teachers are our greatest asset. So, investment in both equals enhanced learning experiences for all of our learners with an inspired staff that are eager to come to school every day to make sure that our students are getting the best possible education. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Liz, who will now talk to us about
Good evening. In last year's presentation, we shared with you what we determined to be our areas of strength. For instance, that students have multiple opportunities to write and to write extended pieces over the course of the year, and that we very much value and implement the process model whenever possible. Our opportunities for growth largely centered on having a systematic approach to writing that first, helps students build skills across grades and content areas. This, of course, requires collaboration amongst teachers and departments to engage in a shared language and approach. Second, it would create more opportunities for students to connect their writing with their reading, which is detailed in the New York State Literacy Briefs. These are reciprocal in nature. Work on strengthening one and the other benefits and vice versa. When the current administration came in, the first order of business was really aligning the elementary schools. So, Dr. Moriarty and veteran staff members like Tracy Broderick analyzed the situation, and they engaged in significant research, which included reaching out to the Dyslexia Association, the Brain Education and Mind or Beam Lab, as well as aligning our work to the recommendations of the Reading League, proponents of the science of reading. Their efforts led to formalizing the use of programs like Hegarty and foundations across buildings, as well as a massive undertaking of building integrated units of study in grades three through five. On, on a personal note, coming into this position and seeing how much has been accomplished in so few years, it's kind of mind-boggling. So, this was So this was then followed by the introduction of reading and writing routines that give teachers clear and accessible strategies and tools to teach skills in a systematic way. At the same time, though, these tools have a built-in flexibility that allows teachers to meet the individualized needs of students. Our main focus, as you'll see from the next few slides, is on building capacity by training more staff, supporting those who have been trained in their implementation, and on how to integrate these routines effectively, as well as capitalizing on the talents of our early adopters to share what they know with others. This first chart illustrates the different routines and approaches that our teachers and administrators have been training in. Keys to Beginning Literacy is tailored to kindergarten through second grade teachers, while Keys to Comprehension is for grade three teachers and beyond. You can see that a significant number of teachers and administrators have completed or in the process of completing this training. The Writing Revolution, also known as the Hockman Method or Hockman Routine, is a very clear and structured approach to writing instruction. All three of these provide common language and approaches that cross grade levels and content areas. A faithful and consistent implementation will have a wonderful impact on students' learning. Kate Roberts is a consultant who's been working with our English teachers in grades four and up to reframe our approach to teaching literature in a way that builds students' skills and level of independence. And she does this through things like learning progressions and implementations of book clubs. Our curriculum team, along with Mr. Gavin and Mr. Murphy, were just talking about how we've been seeing in our teacher observations, clear evidence of these routines, often integrated together in some way. These routines don't, and they shouldn't work in isolation. They naturally align with each other. As always, we view data analysis as a learning opportunity and as you know, we share our insights and plans with you every year. We also included various in-house after-school PDs that administrators, including myself and teachers, have developed, developed and implemented this year. In these next few slides, you'll see to the left are some of the routines implemented previously and that we're continuing to refine. To the right, you'll see new or larger scale action steps that we're focusing on this year. For example, this year, the fourth and fifth grade teachers are actively implementing their knowledge of progressions and book clubs from their work with Kate Roberts and Dr. Moriarty. Earlier this month, Kate met with the fourth grade teachers and modeled the use of small group conferencing in two classrooms to illustrate how to offer a strategy to students to move them up a progression. The teachers were amazed at her efficiency, at how much she was able to accomplish in 30 or so minutes, and yet she was still so warm and funny with the students. So it was really an eye-opening and very positive experience for the teachers. Then also on Superintendent's Conference Day in November, our very own Michelle DiMartino, Tracy Broderick, and Susan DeRosa, those early adopters I mentioned previously, shared their know-how on how to embed writing routines across the content areas. They worked with grades three through five teachers for half the day during Superintendent's Conference Day. At the middle school, there are multiple irons in the fire. So Ms. McGinn and I have been working with the English teachers on focused data analysis, particularly of last year's state exams. To facilitate the process, I created a shared repository of questions and prompts that were problematic for a number of students. I color-coded them by standard to make a helpful visual analysis and pulled constructed response for teacher analysis. The team readily identified action steps to implement. For instance, more often stimulating computer-based testing to increase students' familiarity with that approach and explicitly addressing differences between two-credit and four-credit responses, where we know students left points on the table last year. Regarding Kate Roberts, teachers and I were pleased to spend time with her in October, November, and January. We plan to have her back in the spring to, again, visit a class and model, since the elementary teachers found that to be such a helpful experience. Shifting to the Writing Revolution, not as many teachers at the middle school have been trained, so of course, that's a goal. And toward that end, Dr. Moriarty and I will be holding an after-school PD for teachers who are interested in the hopes that they will also perhaps engage in the online training as well. Those who were trained created a unit in the Strategies for Life class. Ultimately, they realized that it works better or best when paired with content, so they're planning to revisit it with an upcoming research project. And speaking of research, this year, we ran a new inquiry class. And in addition to focusing on how to ask good questions and how to engage in research, the teachers were enthusiastic adopters of AI, but particularly in exploring how to use AI ethically in the writing process. So Mr. Duggan and Mr. Flynn, as many of you know, could talk enthusiastically for hours about their experiences and the positive impact it's had on students' writing. In fact, they brought it to their eighth grade social studies classes as a tool to give students real-time feedback on their writing when they were working on an essay and it was based on a given rubric. They reported, like their minds were blown, that students were going through multiple drafts on their own, actively revising in the face of that immediate feedback before submitting a final product that they felt confident in. You know, we all know teachers can't be everywhere at once, so having a tool that doesn't give kids the answers, but can give actionable feedback has been really exciting. In fact, Mr. Duggan presented at a faculty meeting and has done some after-school PD and word on the street is a number of teachers, a significant number of teachers are now actively exploring tools like Brisk and Kid Oyo. At the high school, we continue training of interested teachers in the Writing Revolution. And toward that end, what's kind of stood out and is particularly fabulous is Dr. Walsh, the principal at the high school, was trained in the Writing Revolution. And he was really interested and intrigued at how accessible it was. And he bit the bullet and decided to make it a session in one of the mandatory staff PDs and he facilitated it himself. So here's a principal from a math content specialty area who was ready to take that on and he did an amazing job and people were talking about it. And in fact, in the weeks after, you could see, for instance, I was in some social studies classrooms and I was seeing evidence of the Writing Revolution in the high school social studies classes. So that was just, it speaks to how he, you know, went above and beyond. We again have after-school PDs on AI as a resource and learning tool, again, run by both administrators and teachers. In terms of approaches to reading instruction or Kate Roberts, she also began work with our ninth grade teachers this year. So they're wrapping their heads around her work and again, we're hoping to have her visit to model and work with the teachers in the spring. In terms of additional writing support, which is something that we're always looking at, this year, we introduced a college application workshop that was offered via the Counseling Center, I believe in July. And then students had another opportunity in September to meet with the counselor and get feedback during our first ever Senior College Application Day. So just as an example, to take a few steps back, I've mentioned progressions a few times and we thought it might be helpful for you to see a progression based on theme. So if you look at the first one, which shows you a progression that was used with fifth graders, right, this is a theme progression, and then compare it to the 11th grade version, you see that the 11th grade version grows in sophistication, has multiple elements to it. And so we see with the progressions, there's always room for growth, right? That there's always ways to challenge our students further and yet there are ways to also make it age and developmentally appropriate. So we were hearing some positive feedback anecdotally and Dr. Moriarty asked me to reach out to the teachers just to get some feedback on, you know, to get a more holistic view. And the response has been very positive. You can see teachers remarking that they have a high level of excitement and interest, that they're seeing more conversation, they're seeing more student independence with the Kate Roberts training, and they themselves are feeling more confident with writing instruction. Those who feel less confident, I imagine with time it'll grow. We have some quotations that'll be posted on the website that you could look at, but for the interests of time regarding the training, we're just going to move on. And then to close out for the English review and update, in terms of curriculum, just as grades three through five engaged in creating integrated units of study, so too will kindergarten through second grade be working on that. We will continue to review writing across the curriculum. In fact, in our next social studies review committee meeting, one of the things we'll be looking at is writing as an area for analysis, which links into collaboration. We're also exploring opportunities for additional writing support at the high school, potential options for drop-in support. In terms of collaboration, as I mentioned, the social studies review and I'm working actively between the English teachers and the social studies teachers to help facilitate that conversation about common language, common approaches moving forward. I'd like to continue the celebration and sharing of success stories like Mr. Duggan's and Mr. Flynn's. And we had, we've been encouraging intervisitations because I think teachers just love to learn from other teachers and see other people in action. So we're hoping to bring more teachers together. For instance, the middle school facilitator and the high school facilitator went to visit a fifth grade class where they were focusing on geography and social studies topics related to the long walk, walk to water. And it was just a great experience for everyone involved, so I'd like to continue those. And of course, we're going to look to continue training with our various teachers and again, build that capacity that we were talking about earlier. Thank you. Mr. Cardy?
Thank you, Ms. Nissler. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. Let's move on along, okay? So this slide highlights the math insight safe from last year. Rather than read these out to you, I will discuss these in greater detail as we move forward through the presentation. I'd like to take a look at our math learning opportunities. So we've aligned our grade six, seven, and eight math curriculums to the next generation standards back in 2223 school year. Fortunately for me, I was part of that process as being the consultant for Nassau Bosse's and I was working with the middle school teachers. It was a great opportunity for me to, to develop those relationships and to report with the students and be a part of that process. So moving forward from there, we, the following year, I had the opportunity in that same role to work with the geometry teachers to align the geometry team with the curriculum for the next-gen standards as well. And I will collaborate with the Algebra II team in February to complete their alignment with the next-gen standards that are coming for next year. I shouldn't have skipped that, I'm sorry. Building Thinking Classrooms with Brendan Scribner. So this year, we introduced training with Brendan Scribner for our middle school teachers. This workshop is designed to equip educators with practical tools and methodologies to create vibrant, thinking-centered mathematics classrooms. Brendan's approach aligns with the principles outlined in Dr. Peter, I'm going to struggle with this name. Lil Jodal, I believe is how it's pronounced, it's a tough one, work on building thinking classrooms. Professional learning is still ongoing and for this year, and we received much excitement, enthusiasm from the teachers. Teachers are actually asking us to come and visit their classrooms to, to see us, allow us to see them implementing it in their classroom. It's really exciting to see. We've had some work with Annalise Record on math practices. We introduced training with Annalise for our five math coaches at the elementary schools during the 2324 school year initially. This school year, for this school year, we have expanded the training to all K5 teachers. Annalise emphasizes the development of flexible risk-taking and confident mathematicians. She provides educators with practical resources and strategies that can be immediately implemented into the classroom. She provides ongoing coaching for our math coaches, guidance and guided math and math workshop models, and daily routines that promotes number sense. We've also used Annalise this year for make thinking activities, math thinking activities with Annalise. This year, we brought Annalise back to give our K2 teachers an opportunity to observe Annalise model activities in the classroom with our students. So we, I was able to observe the actual modeling of Annalise, working with our own students at Hewitt, where our teachers were in the background, kind of observing what was going on, learning those strategies, seeing how her interactions with the students were, and being able to see the, the actual thinking happen on the whiteboards that we had around the classroom. So Annalise used the Building Thinking Classrooms model to, to, to work with the students and it was amazing to watch the way that our students think without having to actually have a conversation with them. You're able to visualize what they're doing. So from our kindergarten classrooms, where they were constructing pictures to display their mathematical thinking, all the way up into second grade where they're starting to put together number sentences and equations. It was a fantastic opportunity to watch. So we continue to analyze data across all grades at the IB and the AP level to, to the state level, as well as our own local assessments. We also continue to provide our own in-house professional development provided by our teachers and administrators, including myself, driven by the needs of our students and our and our teachers. So at the elementary school, we are continuing to schedule Math Box, benchmark our students with Ames Web, and support our tier two and three students by creating goals and progress monitoring. Some of the action steps we have taken for this school, this school year is the implementation of professional learning with Annalise for our five, K5 teachers. Our K2 teachers had the opportunity to watch Annalise in action with our students and learn strategies on how to engage students in math thinking activities using Building Thinking Classrooms. This opens up an opportunity for me and math coaches to intervene and help guide teachers with implementing these strategies into the classroom, allowing for collaboration and growth, improving instruction for our students. We have introduced ST Math, which is an online enrichment, enrichment for number sense to help challenge students through visual representation. At the middle school, we are continuing to reflect and refine our curriculum and collect unit assessment data to strive to get 80% of our students to earn 80% on these assessments. Some of the action steps being taken to focus on, is to focus on data analysis by creating a bank of questions aligned to the standards to help identify growth opportunities for our students by standards. Our eighth grade math teachers have engaged in collegial circle, in a collegial circle book review on Dr. Peter Lilajal, Building Thinking Classrooms. Our six to eight math teachers worked with Brendan Scribner on implementing Building Thinking Classrooms. Brendan is scheduled to come back this March to visit classrooms and model for our teachers. This will allow our teachers to observe and reflect on the balance between explicit instruction and student exploration and collaboration. We're also reviewing our assessments in order to reflect on their effectiveness. Teachers are, teachers are assuring that they are in alignment with the state standards and assessments and adjusting them where necessary. At the high school, we are continuing to reflect and refine our Regents level math curriculum. Last year, we, last year was the first administration of the Algebra I Regents aligned to the next-generation standards. And this June will be the first administration of the Geometry Regents Exam aligned with the, with the next-gen standards. Action steps taken this year are to prepare for the Algebra II curriculum alignment by providing professional development for our teachers and the changes to standards and how this affects our current curriculum. I'll be guiding that professional development with the Algebra II team, like I've done in the past as my role with Nassau Bosse, so I'm looking forward to working with them. We'll continue to identify additional areas requiring focus to improve our practice and help to increase motivation and encourage students. We will be providing professional learning opportunities for training our teachers on scoring all math Regents exams to help identify common misconceptions and to increase consistency for our students. We have worked at partnering with Malloy to add the Financial Investments course discussed by Mr. Gavin at past board meetings. So here's a, a survey that we sent out similar to what Ms. Nissler was talking about from Dr. Moriarty. We also sent out a survey for the Annalise training that we've received. So we sent out the survey to the teachers to get feedback on the Annalise training they had received. Out of 15 respondents, 14 indicated a high or very high interest in her math practices. All of these teachers reported seeing some improvement from their students' behavior towards mathematics. This extremely positive reaction from teachers towards the training they received and the overwhelming increase of positive student behaviors towards math is evident to the successful implementation of Annalise's instructional practices for our students. Here's all the feedback, which you're more than welcome to read. I actually found it very engaging, I think you would too, but I'll let you guys do that on your own time. And here's our next steps. Moving forward, we will continue to collaborate. We will continue articulation across all grade levels and between those grades that have transitions between buildings. We continue data collection to monitor progress towards mastery and to help guide our instruction. The plan is to continue this work next year with Annalise Record and Brendan Scribner. We would like grades three through five to have an opportunity to observe Annalise in their classrooms and learn from her modeling. We would also like Brendan Scribner back, we would like to have Brendan Scribner back to do more modeling in the classroom and classroom observations to help coach teachers. Additionally, I will be meeting with teachers to discuss and implement these instructional strategies for our IB and AP courses to determine is this instructional, are these instructional practices best suited for our higher-level courses? I thank you very much.
So tonight, we heard a lot about professional development and connecting our professional development to our work in curriculum. So it's important for us to keep in mind that our teachers are at the heart of implementing dynamic, evolving curricula. And ongoing training ensures educators are equipped to adapt and refine practices in alignment with curriculum goals. And it fosters a shared understanding of the curriculum's vision and priorities across all grade levels so that we're speaking with a common language and we're able to deliver an equitable learning experience pre-K through 12. It connects to our process because in years two and four, teachers are practicing the refinement of their instruction. They're integrating and piloting new strategies, and they're evaluating the impact of the curriculum as well as their instruction and the resources on the instructional, the instructional impact of, of their learners. We have a commitment, and our commitment is to investing in our teachers to build their capacity to provide meaningful, equitable, and impactful learning experiences for all of our learners. By supporting our educators and supporting their ability to build their capacity and nurturing that growth, we prioritize our students and uphold our academic excellence, academic excellence, inclusion, and equity mission. Last year, it is evident that we have done a lot of things and put a lot of things in place in the elementary level. This year, we are building upon that strong foundation and rolling up a lot of that into our secondary level. We have hosted several districts in their pursuit of excellence and finding best practices in both literacy, reading and, reading and, and writing, as well as the use of AI. In regards to AI, we had four districts come to our district, their assistant superintendents, as well as their directors. Mr. Duffy hosted them at Wilson, and Mrs. McGinn hosted them at the middle school. Their feedback was overwhelmingly positive. They could not believe the amount of writing that was occurring in a social studies classroom, and not just one, but all three. They could not believe the level of writing that our students were undertaking. They also could not believe the high interest that our students took in refining and revising their work multiple times, not to improve for a grade, but to improve their process and improve their overall skill. And that might have been the most gratifying piece of feedback I have ever gotten in my career, to hear that middle school students are jazzed about writing. Similarly, with literacy, we hosted one school district to look at our literacy practices. As Ms. Nizler has stated, we did a lot of research. We worked very collaboratively with our staff members, our faculty, to see what areas they felt that they needed the most support in. We reached out to the Dyslexia League, we reached out to the Beam Lab. We hosted workshops, and we even hosted a workshop that we had multiple districts come to over at Malloy my first year here. When they gave us feedback, it was gratifying in the sense that they said that we have a comprehensive and robust literacy program and that we should be proud of the work that we have engaged in. They walked away with many resources so they can too try to do what we have done here. One of the things that they noticed most was that our students' time on task in the elementary level, K through five, was exquisite, and they couldn't believe how focused our learners were on reading, writing, speaking. Each asked us how we do this and how we were able to accomplish so much in such a short period of time. I reflected on that, and what I was able to tell them that it was a collective approach, that the teachers, the building administration, the directors, myself, the special education office, are all working together toward our shared vision around curriculum instruction, but most importantly, the types of experiences that we want for all of our learners. And it is that collective efficacy that will prove very fruitful as we continue our work moving forward, our shared belief that we can make a difference in the lives of our children. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you all very much. Comments or questions from the board?
Sure, I'll get started, thank you very much. Thinking back to last, our last meeting where we talked a lot about new courses and new offerings, I think it's just as important to talk about the courses that we offer every year and that are the basis for a lot of learning and how they do not, as you say, stay still, right? We are constantly evolving and looking at new and, and improving ways to approach the material and to make sure that we're aligned. And on that topic of alignment, I'm wondering, I appreciated Ms. Nizler's comment about our earlier goal of aligning the elementary schools. So with that in mind, as we, I realize not every teacher can be on the curriculum review committee, right? So how are we making sure that every teacher has access to all of these great resources and that the, the departments will be aligned regardless of whether they're on a committee or they attended a professional development opportunity? How can we make sure that there is consistency?
Something that was a tenant for this district prior to Mr. Gavin's arrival here and prior to my arrival here was the idea of a collective constituency as well as collective efficacy. And what I mean by that is that our teachers in their day have time to be able to collaborate. So be it a morning meeting, be it a department meeting, across our district, K through 12, they do have that opportunity. So our teachers who work on our committees, they then go back, they then have these conversations. That is also facilitated, is supported, and nurtured by the directors that we have here that go in and have these conversations with them and continue the dialogue. Our principals have been integral in this as well. So as you heard, Dr. Walsh conducted a professional development. You heard about Michelle DiMartino. We also had Mrs. Pascarella, as well as Mr. Duffy and Mr. Zapia, thank you, also hosts a professional development too. So they're engaged in the training, they're engaged in the conversations, they're continuing the work at their level as well with their teachers. So again, it goes back to that collective efficacy. We have the time in the day that we've dedicated for our teachers to collaborate with one another, that's very important. And then we have all of us as a team working toward our shared vision, and we are constantly communicating with one another. And at this point, we've gotten to the point where, yes, we're identifying glows, but we're also being very critical of our work and saying, this is how we need to improve. I don't know if it's work for right now or if it's work for summer. We need to tease that out, and we're engaging in those conversations on a daily basis.
Good, thank you. And I think that's a good example of embedding a sort of literacy initiative across different content areas, right? So that a math, a teacher with a math background can attend a literacy development and see, because the students will eventually, they'll hit word problems, right? And you will need all of these skills. So in terms of teachers feeling prepared, do they, beyond the English department, have opportunities to attend other department trainings?
Absolutely. So all of the literacy that we're talking about is literacy across the content area. So the reading and writing across the content area, it's offered to every single person, PM hours are choice, so they can obviously choose to, to go into that. As Ms. Nizler pointed out, when Mr., when Dr. Walsh did his workshop and presentation, the social studies teachers are the ones that gravitated toward it and started to implement it right away into their practices. That's just one example of many examples. I could stand here and give you so many more, but for the, you know, interest of time. So yes, everybody has the opportunity to. And the same model of the collaboration and the time in class, the time during the day to be able to collaborate holds true for math as well. I don't want to leave Mr. Accardi out and the math team, but it is true for all of our content areas.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks so much for the presentation. Obviously, everyone's been very hard at work. There's a lot going on, which is fantastic. And I can definitely say, I've said it before, but at the elementary level, like there's, there's been a clear shift in the approach. Just I can tell from my, the experience of my older two versus my youngest who's going in fifth grade now. Just the way that she's writing and thinking about her writing, thinking about what she's reading, her Post-its and her, like, take-home books, it's all, it's, it's clearly different than what had been happening previously. So I think that's fantastic to see. More, a couple of comments rather than questions. I really like the idea of trying to continue to build across departments, building on what Dr. Downing said. I think one of the hardest things for students is when they think that good writing is different in social studies than it is in English, than it is in science, and really, it's, it's not. There, there are minor structural differences, but like, good writing is good writing. And the more that the teachers have that common language, so it's not, well, my English teacher said, this is where I put my thesis statement versus my social, you know, that for us doesn't seem as confusing, but for them, they get very hung up on some of that. So I appreciate the more we can find that continuity and build that continuity. I think that's great. I'm also really interested in the concept of harnessing AI for writing feedback. I think one of the hardest jobs of a teacher is to provide timely and detailed feedback for 120 students. If you're an English teacher or a social studies teacher, to be able to do that is virtually impossible. So, I mean, that would be fantastic if we could figure out a way to change things for our kids that way. I also love the idea of progressions because every kid is kind of at a certain step, and they have a next step, and it's a good way to differentiate. Just, so, so that's on the ELA side. On the math side, I do have one question. Can you give like a concrete example of what Building Thinking Classrooms means? We've heard it a bunch. I'm not 100% clear. I think parents might not be 100% clear either.
So I'm going to start, and then I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Accardi, okay? It's fascinating. It is an approach, one of many approaches, and it can actually be used across the content area. And that's really part of the beauty in it is because everything that we're building is how can it be used across content areas and not siloed, which is exactly what you're talking about with writing. So students are posed a problem. And that problem might be visual for the younger kids, and it's, it's thrown up there on, on the, on the board. And then the students are paired up in maybe twos or threes with one marker on, on the whiteboard. And they sit there and they talk with, stand, they talk, and they discuss how they would go about solving the problem, and they go through solving this problem. The teacher is walking around, conferencing with the students, providing them with feedback right there on the spot, asking them questions. Since everything is visible, it's really making their thinking visible, you know, John Hattie's work around that. Since everything is visible around the room, students are able to look to see what their peers are doing, can walk around, talk to their peers, get other ideas, spark interest and, and motivation. At a certain point, time is called, and what the teacher is also doing as she's walking around is looking to see developmentally where every group is, right? So who's doing modeling with maybe pictures, then who's moving to modeling with manipulatives, then who's drawing actual, you know, on the board, and then who is working with actual numbers, right? And then she picks specific ones in the developmental order for the kids to go talk around, almost like rounds, like a doctor would do, right? And when they're standing there, the teacher will walk them through a series of questions and really asking the students to figure out what that group did, what they were thinking, and how they approached it. And in those moments then would be explicit instruction. So it's one way to approach, and then they go, and they do it again, and they do it again, and they do it again, and they solidify their understanding about whatever concept it is that they were talking about. These are great activities because they have, like we were talking about last year, high ceiling, low floor, multiple entry points. So all students, regardless of level, are able, or mathematical level, are able to participate in a very meaningful way, and the teacher's allowed, is able to move them along that progression, right? And those progressions in English or in math, what they serve is, as a communication tool that is visible so that both the teacher, the student knows exactly where they are, what they're working on, where they need to go, and then how they're going to get there. It's a powerful tool to put the learning in the pocket of the student, or they're in the driver's seat is another way to put it. They own their learning. Do you have something to add? Did I do it all? I just really love it.
I do because it's just not who I am, I can't help it. All of that, yes, and I, I think it's very important for us to understand that Building Thinking Classrooms is not a way of changing the way we teach. It's, it's a tool, as Dr. Moriarty was saying, is it's a tool to, to be able to see what our students know, to assess our students, and get them to collaborate and, and really work around that student-centered classroom. Explicit instruction still needs to happen. Students still need to learn the skills that they need to learn, and that's, that's part of what we do in our classroom. We, we need to instruct our students, give them the skills that they need, but now let's see how it's applied. Let's see your thinking, demonstrate your thinking, and Building Thinking Classrooms gives us that opportunity to do that.
That's great, thank you. And it's also true, right, that teaching someone else helps you internalize your learning? So it, there's the added benefit of that as well, that they are sort of learning better by teaching each other. Just, or, or learning additionally maybe is a different way to say it. Two other quick math questions. So am I right that the students who had the first team taught Algebra I at, in eighth grade, are they in Algebra II now?
They should be, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
They would, they would be taking Algebra II this year.
I'm just curious if there's, if your Algebra II teachers are noticing any difference that maybe the foundation was stronger or not, but I'm just curious if there, if there is anything sort of long-term that we're noticing coming out of that investment in eighth grade?
I think that's a wonderful question, and it's something that when, Mr. Accardi, you're starting to work with the team around that, that work, that is something that we should definitely, conversation. Right now, we've heard no news about anybody feeling that the students are not equipped, not capable. So that is good news. But now conversely, we would like to know, has there been added benefit because of this? And I think that's wonderful. We definitely will investigate that. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you. And my final question, you talked about student behavior toward math. That's another thing. I'm just interested in sort of tracking long-term if the changes we're, we have been making and are going to continue to make, have a noticeable impact on student attitude and feeling that they can do it. I think that is often one of the biggest stumbling blocks, more so in math than in the humanities, that kids get more easily frustrated and then it just becomes this bear that they can't. that kids get more easily frustrated and then it just becomes this bear that they can't, you know, overcome. So I'm just curious if, if we could maybe take a look at that over time as well?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A general question about pilots, program pilots. As you're going through the review process, whatever stage we're at, doesn't matter which year, pilot program could be at any time. What's the process for bringing in a pilot for something new? How many teachers or classes or sections would try something? How does that factor into then your review process and assessing if we're kind of on the right track year over year with what's out and available to us and, you know, if we feel we're utilizing the best methods? How does that process work?
Okay, so with, all the things that we have been talking about here are more approaches than really programs to build the internal capacity of our staff, to further build the internal capacity of our staff to be able to be responsive to all of our learners at any given time. So I guess an example of a program that we have implemented right now would be, or we did implement, would be MAP Accelerator. So last year, we implemented MAP Accelerator K through six. And the math team in the elementary school were, did it with fidelity. They went into all the classrooms, they got the students set up on it. And some students met with success, some students found it to be challenging. And students, some students were being pushed well beyond their, their years in instruction. At the same time, they were looking at ST Math. And they found that ST Math was more aligned to our actual program for math. And they asked if, after they went through it and we had feedback from our staff, we had feedback from our students, we had feedback from them, if it would be okay if we then also piloted ST Math. So we piloted ST Math and at the end of both of those pilots, the decision overwhelmingly from our staff members was that ST Math is a better fit K5. We didn't make that move up to the middle school. We kept MAP Accelerator at the middle school because at the middle school level, MAP Accelerator seemed to be more appropriate. And we're still in the process of analyzing its use, the fidelity of use, and how our students are responding to MAP Accelerator. So that's pretty much how we would go about it.
Okay. Because I think it's important that we, you know, it, it's almost like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Like we're never not doing it. We're always reviewing. So we could call it a five-year cycle, two, three, it doesn't matter. By the time we get around to it, we're coming back around and we're doing it again. So it's like you just want to make sure that the piloting of new and ideas and, you know, AI or whatever technology that we don't even know exists yet, as it gets integrated, that we're finding a, like a way and a room to kind of showcase it and see if it's, if it's appropriate for us so that we're always moving up forward and forging ahead. So that's, was my question about that. And just in terms of a general review, I get a lot of sense in this about a lot of professional development and how we're developing teachers. I think I just would want to expand the way we look at a review in terms of, and maybe it's happening, but just in terms of presentation. Data to me is so important. I know we have data presentations in other board meetings with different schools, elementary, the middle, and the high. But, you know, as it relates to these subjects, I think it's helpful to be able to look at in a five-year cycle, the fourth graders that then go up to, you know, five, six, seven, eight, that's their five-year cycle. How is this class charting across the board? And being able to look at that as part of, we're in year two, so this grade went here and this is what we see improvement in. And across the board, whatever, you know, curricular area we're looking at, I think data is, is something I'd love to see here. Because the outcomes matter so much, like how are our kids doing with what we're reviewing? So that's one. Two, I would say, I would want to incorporate budget here and assessing our ROI on, you know, what, what did that extra teacher in math yield us in results and outcomes? So I want to look at it from a fiscal side. And then on the special ed side, I'd love to have a breakdown of, are our programs and curriculum still equitable access for our special ed students? As we move forward and we try new things and we're reviewing, can we take that like lens of looking at this through our different learners? And not just kind of looking at the review as a whole, general ed, or, you know, we have our ELL learners or we have our special ed learners. I just am interested in breaking it down a little bit, again, maybe my data hat is on, but just making sure, always ensuring that we have equitable access to the curriculum for all of our students. So those are the three areas I feel I would like to see broadened in, in a review process. And I love quotes from teachers and I love PD and I love all of it. I just want to see this added to, not in place of, but because it matters how our teachers feel, but it also really matters how our students are doing. And it matters how we as a board can assess how we move forward. And I think budget does play a role in that and special ed does play a role in that. So those are just my, my asks for any review, any, any subject matter, but that we just make sure that we're kind of looking at everything from every lens, so. But I love, a little bit more data would be, would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really do appreciate all of the work that's been done. You know, when I first joined the board three years ago, it was very difficult to get a clear answer about what our English curriculum was, what our reading curriculum was, what reading program we were using and if that was actually aligned to the state standards and the same with math. So in looking at the work that's been done over the last two and a half years, it really is quite staggering that we have been able to pivot from what was to being able to present curriculum that is not only aligned with state standards, but is also aligned to best practice. So I really do appreciate the time and the effort that was put into the development in both content areas. I do agree with Mrs. Hackett about data. I would like to see data incorporated more explicitly. I mean, I did go back and look at like our elementary data report and our middle-level data report. And there definitely is improvement if we're looking at cohort, you know, our third grade, third graders last year performed better this year as, as fourth graders, et cetera, in both English and math. So it's good to see those gains. As I said, back when we looked at the data originally, I do have concerns about the overall performance. You know, we do have our, in English, we have under 75% of our kids scoring at proficiency. And that's an area for improvement. Now, again, it's been two years. We've made these changes, things aren't going to change overnight. Like I'm wholly cognizant of that. And I appreciate that. But I think that there's definitely, that doesn't reflect our potential as a district. So those are, those are things I'm looking forward to seeing improve as we move forward. I also have a little bit of concern about math. What else is new? At the middle and high school level, I mean, talking about like revamping curriculum. Again, this is what we've inherited, this is what we've adopted. I know the Algebra I curriculum was reviewed about a year and a half ago. We've worked on geometry, we're currently working on Algebra II. But the fact of the matter is like these kids are taking these new regions now. And I just feel like with science, we're behind the ball. And it's the same cohort of children who the teachers revamped Algebra I, they took the regions, with those teachers having little time to really practice what those changes might look like. And again, I understand it was not a complete overhaul of the entire curriculum, but it's still, when you're teaching and you have new standards to teach to, it would be nice to have some wiggle room and some practice time to really, you know, to ensure that instruction is perfect before we now have to send these children off to take the regions. It's that same group who's doing it with geometry, same group now who will be doing it with Algebra II. It just feels unfair to those students. And I know the same is true of science as well where, and again, these standards came out in 2017, you are not here in 2017. But those are just things that I look at that, I don't know, they're, they're upsetting. You know, with regards to English, I appreciate that we're implementing writing revolution across the grade levels. I think it's important to have a shared language, shared process. And I'd love to see more of our teachers be voluntold to really engage because I think the more people who are saying the same thing, the quicker our kids are gonna, are gonna pick that up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, turning to policies. We have no policies currently at Stage One this evening. Currently at Stage Two, we have 7515, students and staff with life-threatening health conditions. Any comments or questions on 7515? Okay to move?
Yep.
Yes. Currently at Stage Three, 6111, staff conflict of interest. Comments or questions on 6111?
Nope.
Okay, to move to approval at the next meeting?
Yep.
Yes. Thank you. 7513, administration of medication. Comments or questions? Okay to move as well?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, F2 to I12?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Next meeting is a regular meeting and is scheduled for February 6th at 7:00 PM. Have a good evening.